Welcome to the May 24th meeting of the Bennington Select Board. I am Jeanne Jenkins and I am Chair of this board and now I'd like to ask all of my fellow board members to unmute and please introduce yourselves.
Hi, everybody. My name is Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening. Oops.
Did I do that wrong? Good evening. Gary Corey.
Hi, it's Jean Connor.
Good evening. It's Jim Carroll. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Evening, everyone. Tom Haley.
That's great. Thank you all. We also have with us tonight Stu Hurd, who is our esteemed Town Manager, Dan Monks, our Assistant Town Manager. I think Shannon Barsati, yes, she's here, Community Development Director, Josh Boucher from Cat TV, Nancy Lively, who always takes excellent minutes for us. And then we have some special guests for the discussion on Extension of Designated Downtown. We have Michael McDonough, who is the Chair of the Planning Commission and also Chair of the BBC's Design Committee. And I think we have joining us for the discussion on sidewalk materials, RJ Jolly, who is the Public Works Director for the town. So our next or first order of business is always to read the pandemic statement. And as I read it, Dan's going to put up the information on the screen so you can see it. So due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott and pursuant to Addendum 6 to Executive Order 1-20 Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting by either viewing it on Cat TV Channel 1085 or going to Cat TV Facebook Live. If you wish to participate, you can join the meeting as an attendee. And there are two ways to do that. You can join the Zoom webinar at the address listed and it is also, I believe, a live link on the website. Or you can dial in by dialing 1-646-558-8656 with the meeting ID number of 894-4878-2346. Zoom attendees will be able to view the meeting, but in order to be recognized to speak, you must either, if you were on the webinar function, raise hand, use the raise hand function to be recognized by the chair. Or if you were on telephone, push star nine and that will, that will initiate the raise hand function. When you're prompted, if you were on telephone, you will have to hit star six to be unmuted. So and you will be asked to clearly state your full name and your residence before speaking. Okay. So next up, we have, we move on to the agenda. And the first thing on our agenda is the reading of the town's, Town of Bennington's Vision Statement, which reminds all of us why we are here. So Jean, would you do that for us?
Sure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And next, we are moving on to the consent agenda, which includes a minutes from 5:10, the executive session from April 29th. Warrants circulated and the liquor license that renewal that was added for Harvest Brewery. For the purposes of discussion, we have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Who wants to claim it?
I don't care.
Second. Okay. Okay. All right. Great. Any, so any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right. So then let's vote. All those in, please unmute yourself. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say no. Those abstaining, please abstain, say so. All right. So great. Thank you. We have accepted the consent agenda. So next, we are moving into public comment. And first, I'm going to share the six practices that we agreed to at the May 10th meeting to make the public comment period more productive and informative. There are some nuances here, so we will help you over the next couple of meetings to be comfortable with these changes. First, public comment is a time to allow residents an opportunity to share information or make announcements that benefit the community at large. Second, the topic should not be related to an agenda item. If a member of the public wants to comment on an agenda item, you're welcome to do so during the discussion of that item. Third, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Four, you're required to state your name, your full name and your town of residence. Five, sharing comments, announcements and concerns are encouraged rather than asking questions. Public comment is not a time for discussion. If you have specific questions, the best way to get answers is to contact our fearless leader, Stu Hurd, and he will at the town office and he can give you accurate information. And last, if a topic does require more discussion, then we will consider taking it up as an agenda item. So with that, I see we have several people wanting to speak tonight. So first up, looks like Lynn, you are, you are unmuted. And please state your name and where in town of residence and tell us what's on your mind.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for allowing me opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Lynn Fontaine McCann. I'm a North Bennington resident and I'm the Director of the Bennington Free Library. I just wanted to let our community know that the library is open and we have been open since May 17th. And we are currently open Monday, Wednesday and Saturdays from 10 to 1 and Thursday evenings from 4 to 7. We will continue to increase our dates and our hours as long as it's increasingly safe to do so. So every week or two, you can see an uptick in terms of the hours and the number of days that were available. We do continue to require folks to wear masks in order to ensure everyone's safety. Browsing and computer access is available, so you can go in and browse the stacks. As we are reopening, we're taking this opportunity to hit, re-hit the refresh button and solicit input from our community regarding our services and programs. So currently, that are currently being offered and just for some, and if you have any ideas that you'd like to present for future programming. As an incentive, participants will be entered into a drawing. We have a great gift basket from Bringing You Vermont. We have a gift certificate to the Your Bellies Deli. We have a half gallon of maple syrup from a local producer, as well as a gift certificate to the Bennington Bookshop. It's very easy to, to complete the survey, which is short. It's about six questions. You can either do it online from our website, which is, please, will you please check in link on the library's website? Or you can come into the library and fill out a paper copy. All submissions should be received by May 31st in order to be, to participate in the June 1st drawing. You don't need to be a member to participate paid, although we hope if you'll, you come in, you can, or if you're not currently a member of the library, you don't have a card, you can sign up for a card online or you can come in and fill out a card. We'll be glad to add you to our list. Just because there's so much that the library has to offer the community. And finally, I just, I guess I want to encourage everyone to check our social media. We post information about upcoming programs on our Facebook page regularly, on Front Page Forum and our library's website. So things are coming up current, very soon, we have an Aging Gardeners, Aging Gardeners, Aging, Aging Gardens, Aging Gardeners coming up on June 7th. The online discussion of the Vermont Reads selection, which for 220, which was the Hate You Give, which is a pretty timely topic. If any of you have read the book, it is about systemic racism. There is a link on our webpage to the audio program and we also are working with the local school students who will be designing Converse sneakers using graphic software. They'll complete their designs and then log a reflection of the activity on the process, which will be shared with the community as well. These were purchased from the, by the library with a donation from Community Bank. And this will all be completed by the end of June 21. So I encourage you, if you have any questions, staff are there during the week. We answer our phones, we answer our email. If you have questions about what's going on, any services, if you want to come in and learn how to use your iPhone or your Chromebook, library is there to help you do that. So get in touch. We'd love to hear from you. And that's probably about three minutes. If not, that's all I got.
That's great, Lynn. Thank you. It sounds like you have a ton of stuff going on and a ton of ways for people to engage and that's all really wonderful. Thank you very much for sharing this.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night.
All right. Next up is Mia. Mia, if you would, please state your name and town of residence and tell us what's on your mind.
My name is Mia Schultz. Obviously, I'm in Bennington, Vermont. And I see that on the agenda, you do have the Safety and Equity Community Proposal on the agenda. So I would like to read a statement from the NAACP in which I am the President of in this area and the ACLU. Should I wait to that portion of the meeting to say that and will I be allowed to do so?
Yes, of course.
Oh, well, I don't know if the courses is, is, is.
Yes.
I can't take that for granted, Jeanne.
All right, Mia. So yes, that would be the appropriate time to do it and you can make whatever statement you'd like to make at that time.
Sounds good. Thank you.
See you in a little bit then. Great. All right. So let's see. Let's go to phone ending in 025. You will probably have to hit star six to be able to speak.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi, this is Nancy White calling Bennington.
Hi.
First, I want to say that I got the information from Stu that I've been asking for several months on from the Y and I will go over that and get back to Stu. But it's important, in case you don't know, that Stu did find out the Y did owe the town money. And if I had not asked at public meetings for several months, I don't think you ever would have realized that. So I think it's critical.
That's absolutely not true, Nancy. I'm sorry to cut you off. That's absolutely not true. The Y was producing, producing their audit for 2020. It was just completed. They determined that they did owe us back some money or, and have made arrangements to do that. So it's not true that, that we discovered it. This is the part of their normal process. And Nancy, you have to understand, these things happen when they're supposed to happen. And their audit was delayed a little bit because of personnel shortfalls, as I told you in my email. But once it was completed and they realized that they had had a better year than everyone anticipated, they made arrangements to so that's the truth, Nancy, please.
Okay, I, I just thought their budget ended in either November or December. I thought they would have had the audit before then.
No, they, they are on a calendar year, January to December.
Okay. And, and I do have a question.
So Nancy, so I want, can you, can you, to abide by the new rules, if, I'm going to ask you, if you can, to reframe your question into a comment of something that you would.
Okay, I, yes, I can do that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
As a result of COVID, our senior center was closed. I'm sorry, are you talking? As a result of COVID, the senior center was closed for most of the year. We have an extra $103,000 in that budget. The Rec Center budget has nearly a quarter of a million dollars left. Our town budget ends in June. The voters approved this spending a year ago. I want to know what's going to happen to that $397,000 at the end of this budget year? Because I do not think that you can take this money and use it for new projects and programs and positions because the voters never spent, never approved that spending. So I don't know how I'm going to get an answer. But this $379,000, $100,000 is a credit to the Bennington taxpayers. And I don't know how I'll get an answer. But again, I don't think it's ethical or legal that you can take this money and now spend it for something that was never voted approved.
Okay. So Nancy, thank you. Thank you for your comment and we will.
Jeanne, I'd like to answer that question, so everybody at home knows that there is an answer.
All right, go ahead.
The, any excess funds that remain in, in any of the budgets will be moved into the fund balance, which will be carried over into future years. I can tell you that we have a bid for the senior center roof that came in over what was anticipated. So some of those senior center funds will be spent in reshingling the roof at the senior center. Other parts of those funds may end up being spent to cover other expenses that were not anticipated, such as the mowing and, and care of the Southern Vermont College fields that are benefiting the community. So anything that is excess though, Nancy, gets carried into the fund balance and can be used in future years. That is provided by law in the state of Vermont.
Okay, I thought I read in the article in the banner today, you were talking about a new position in the town office and you were going to use that money that was left over. It isn't coming out of the Parks and Recreation Budget?
The, the funds that, that are going to be used for this position, I know this is a later agenda item, they will come out of the FY 2022 funds, which also, because of the way they were budgeted, show a surplus at the present time. But that will be reviewed by the board and either approved or rejected by the board in a public meeting.
Right. And so we'll hold that, any further discussion on that until we get to that agenda item that works. So Nancy, you're welcome.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. You're welcome.
Bye.
I'm going to move to telephone ending in 312. You may need to press star six. Well, Dan. Looks like, please try and press star six and see if that unmutes you.
And Jeanne, I've asked them to unmute, but I don't know what's happening.
Okay. Right. Well. Let's go on. All right. So let's go on to the next caller and, and we'll come back to this caller if they can figure out. Whoa. No, they've unmuted themselves. All right. Caller three, ending in 312, please state your name and your town of residence and let us know what's on your mind.
Jeanne, they are still muted. They are still muted.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then let's go on. I see Southwest Vermont Chamber is here.
Good evening. Hi, Chair Jenkins. How are you?
I'm good. Who is this?
This is Matt Harrington from the Southwestern Vermont Chamber of Commerce and a resident of Bennington. Good evening, everybody. So we do have a quick prepared statement and some exciting news to let the Select Board know, as well as the citizens of Bennington. So I'll, I'll read through that. On behalf of the Southwestern Vermont Chamber of Commerce in partnership with the Better Bennington Corporation and the Town of Bennington, it is my absolute pleasure to notify you that we will be doing Garlic Fest. We will be moving and bringing Garlic Fest to downtown Bennington this coming Labor Day weekend. Garlic Fest in downtown Bennington will be known as Garlic Town USA, which many of you witnessed the pilot last year. This year, we are working on a single day event on Saturday, September 4th, but encourage area nonprofits and organizations to build events around the weekend to encourage travelers to stay the full, long weekend. Last year, we saw over 3,000 people move throughout the downtown event safely. And we also saw a large economic boost to downtown with many of our chamber members reporting the best sales day of the year and the best Labor Day weekend sales in 10 years. Based on last year's success with Garlic Town USA and still feeling like patrons will be cautious as they begin to get back to normal, the Board of Directors of the Chamber and staff decided to move forward with another Garlic Town event this year. Most of the event will be open to the public. The small shops of Bennington's downtown will have sidewalk sales. Area nonprofits will provide music and kids' activities and the restaurants are encouraged to provide outside entertainment as well. And there will also be a restaurant week with garlic themed dishes throughout the week as well, leading up to the event. The cloves, if people remember cloves from last year, will return. This time, the Garlic Town Committee is promising over 100 vendors in four to five cloves throughout downtown, creating mini Garlic Fest all around. cloves will include the original garlic growers of some of the first Garlic Fests, as well as arts and craft vendors and a variety of food trucks and dessert carts. In order for the public to enter the cloves, there is a cost and an individual can purchase an all-access pass starting at $12. And you can go right to the website garletetownusa.com today to purchase those. This pass will get patrons into all the cloves throughout town. Families can purchase an all-access family pass for $25 to $30, which includes two adult tickets and unlimited children. Let me encourage residents and travelers. Downtown Bennington will be open and free to attend many of the events that day. However, to get into the cloves and to handle the management and operation of those cloves, we are charging a nominal fee. We want to personally thank the Bennington Police Department, Vermont Department of Health, Southwestern Vermont Medical Center, the Town of Bennington and the BBC already for their support and guidance as we plan this event. The Chamber and partners will roll out more information as we work on the details and move throughout the summer. Please head on over to www.garletetownusa.com for more information and updates. Follow Southern Vermont Garlic and Herb Festival on Facebook, Garlic Fest VT on Instagram for updates and mark your calendars for a really big party on September 4th, 2021. And thank you for your time.
That's great, Matt. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jim, is it a really quick question?
Yeah. For Matt, it, it, will, would, will there be a proposed closing of Main Street? You know, from the four corners up to Silver, Silver Street? Or has that not been thought about yet?
So I think we're leaning towards not closing down north or south or Main Street. It just creates a headache. And when we talked to Chief Doucette and John Shanahan and Shannon Barsati, we all came to the conclusion, let's not close down those streets. But let's look at closing down a portion of School Street, possibly Silver and Valentine, some of the more side streets, which will create, you know, for lack of a better term, blowout areas where people can sit and rest or have kids' activities. And some of it, and I appreciate John Shanahan saying this, is, you know, Bennington has to get used to having a lot of people in it. And, and we should be able to operate our roads and have people travel safely while also having a lot of people on Main Street and on the sidewalk. So at the current moment, Jim, no main clothes, uh, main roads closed, but some of the side streets will be closed for, again, events, small events and, and sitting areas.
Okay, just one final comment. Last year's event was great. It really was. And it was so good to see so many people throughout the downtown. And I've spoken with John Shanahan about this and it's my fervent wish and desire is that we revive the car show in the downtown in much the same way as Garlic Town. I think it'd be fabulous for the town.
Always happy to, always happy to explore that, Jim. And, you know, obviously, the Veterans Home has done a terrific job on Father's Day weekend. So I know they work on some things and obviously Hemmings with their Thursday Cruisin's. So we, we're, we're in discussions right now with a pre-World War II vendor who's going to do a car show throughout Bennington and Manchester later on in September. I think that's still a goal. And a part of that will be at the Veterans Home and part of that, I believe they're working at, being at Riley Rink. And that'll be pre-World War II classics. So we're pretty excited about that too. So when we see, you know, when we see how the, the crowd responds to that, you know, we're always, we're always looking for a good event and a good party. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, everybody.
Looking forward to this. This will be super. All right. I'm glad we have so many callers tonight. We have one more, 312. Phone ending in 312. Please state your name, where, your town of residence and let us know what is on your mind. Oh, no. All right. We may have to, 312, might not be speaking tonight. Right. Somehow they're muted again. Nope, you're unmuted. Go for it.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is John Doe and I just wanted to congratulate the Police Department for passing the IACP and by me, no racial bias. And hopefully we can keep that going without having to add further policies or anything like that. And they did such a wonderful job on that. That's my comment. I did notice that you guys are going to talk about the safety and equity later down the road, but I'm currently on my break for my job. So I'm going to pose the question now. If you could answer it when you get to that, so I can watch it later, that would be helpful. So my question for the Safety and Equity Board is this committee that's going to be put in place, is this going to be a voters committee? Or is this going to be a picked committee from that organization? And my other question is, is how are, how is this community or committee going to make Republicans feel included and inclusive in Benton, Vermont? Since there's a pretty negative stereotype against Republicans in the last couple of years nationwide. But that's my question. If you guys could answer those two questions later down the road, that'd be great.
Thank you. We will do our best.
Have a good day.
Thank you very much.
You as well.
Bye-bye. All right. So great. That was really nice to have so many people calling in to speak. That's wonderful. Um, all right. We're ready to move on to our next agenda item and that is the Extension of the Designated Downtown. And I think we have Sha, I know we have Shannon Barsati and Michael McDonough with us to explain what is being proposed. And we will, I'll let you guys take it away.
Great. Well, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. I included in the Select Board packet a memo about a proposed expansion of Bennington's Downtown District, the designated downtown for the state. And as well as a map that shows the extended area, which I can pull up if you'd like to have the visual. And what we're doing tonight is, like in most applications to the states, there, there is a required resolution that the Select Board needs to sign to move forward with an application. This is not a very involved application. It's really an amendment to the current designated downtown. Why don't we go, should I go ahead and share my screen so we can look at that?
I think so. Yeah.
Okay. So. Everybody see this? Do you guys all see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So, so this map is from 2009. So, so these days when we, that VCRC created, these days when we put in an application, we have to have a lot more detail. But basically, it shows you that this red outline is the, what's called the Historic Central Business Design Review District. So all of the area within that, you know, any changes that are made to, to properties there need to go before a design review process. That includes the Historic Preservation Commission and the Development Review Board. And if you have more questions about that, we have our resident expert, Mike McDonough, here to talk more about that. So we, that's the Design Review District and the Downtown Improvement District is in green, which is also the designated downtown by the state. Then the Historic Register District is this blue outline. So this discussion came up with the Better Bennington Corporation to look at creating an, an extension in part because of the, some of the benefits to doing that. One of which is that by adding this yellow area, which is all of the properties abutting Main Street up to Pleasant, so to include Ben High and the other adjacent properties. so to include Ben High and the other adjacent properties, is that then those property owners are eligible to receive historic tax credits, which especially in the case of Ben High being such a large endeavor to renovate that entire building, that can really help to, you know, move forward with revitalization efforts. And this is a tool that's used in development. For example, the Putnam Block received historic tax credits. So that's one of the reasons we're doing this. And another reason is because by including that in the designated downtown of the state, that makes that entire area eligible for other state grants as well, such as the downtown the downtown improvement, I'm sorry, downtown transportation fund, which recently funded the Franklin Lane Improvement Project. And there are others as well. Basically, everything that's in your designated downtown just kind of gets you higher when the state is scoring grants. The area that's designated downtown is really the spotlight that they want to see projects happening. So the BBC has approved this. The state, from the downtown board, I've talked with Gary Holloway at the state. He said he suggested that we move forward with this. There's sort of a time crunch right now because the downtown board is going to be meeting in June, and the federal tax credit application, the historic tax credits application is due at the beginning of July. So we said, well, let's move forward with the Select Board's approval. If you approve of this process, then it's a good time to do it. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and Mike McDonough is as well.
Bruce, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, Jeanie. Shannon, you've mentioned benefits. I'm wondering, because they often go together, are there any costs involved?
Well, at this point, no. We did ask the question, you know, about does this have to be included in the taxing district? And it does not. That is a possibility if that would require voter approval. So at this point, it's a fairly simple process to create the amendment to the current designated area. That said, none of these grants are easy peasy to apply for. I mean, they do take work, and it takes some dedication, you know. But it can really be worth it for large redevelopment projects.
So Shannon, you're saying the cost is really, is in part your time?
My time, you know, but also the property owners really have to, they have to want to do this. They have to put the time in. They have to work with the state. It's not really, I certainly would be, you know, a facilitator to help in any way. But, you know, it really is the onus is on the property owners to apply for these tax credit programs. It's not something that I do. It's not an application that I fill out.
Got it. Okay. Gary, you have a question?
Yeah, Shannon, Mike. One question I have is why, why just this area? Why not open this up to the Historic Central Business District, the Design Review District? Why wouldn't you just include everybody in that?
Right, well, I'll speak to it for a second, and then I'll let Mike answer. But really, the purpose of the downtown designation, as I understand it, is, you know, around kind of your commercial center. And, you know, I walked that area and started to look at it and take photographs. And if you really go up, even though there are a number of historic homes along that stretch of Main Street, many of the properties there have taken on a commercial role, you know. And so the question was, does it make sense that this really, is this what we think of when we think of downtown? And I think some of the, you know, there's a strong case to be made to include Ben High in that, whereas some of the other areas in the Design Review District, I think it's not as easy of a sell to the state. That would be my take on it, but I'm curious to know what Mike McDonough thinks.
Shannon has touched on all the bases, I believe. The designated downtown program, Gary, comes with certain statutory and policy requirements. And the downtown board, and that was also, could have been on my list, that Jeanie was so kind to read. The downtown board reviews applications for designation and also for any extension. And both the designation and any proposed extensions have to meet that statutory criteria. And it would be a source of debate as to whether all of the areas within the Design Review District would qualify under those statutory requirements. So I would suggest that, well, I would mention that the BBC is in the process of doing an analysis, if any of you are aware of, of what our understanding as a community is with regards to the extent to which downtown, the area that downtown encompasses. Out of that conversation may very well be some other proposals or considerations for expansion of the designated area, state designated area. But as that process is still ongoing, we felt that it was entirely appropriate for us to somewhat fast track this particular extension because of the new dynamic that the renovations to the Ben High Building are introducing. And those dynamics do fit, in our view, clearly into the criteria for designation. So this is a, this is a small step in a larger conversation that we will be having, but guided by the state and the Vermont Downtown Board policy.
And the timing makes it appropriate to go ahead and do this piece, even though it may mean going back a second time and saying, here's some other areas that we want to have the board consider.
Yes.
Yeah, and I remember 10, maybe it's 15 years ago, talking about this exact same thing. The one thing that strikes me here is, when I look at it, I see the Catamount, the old Catamount School up on North Street. It feels like somehow it's lost from that.
Gary, it's included. This map is outdated. In 2013.
Oh, good. Excellent.
So you have a sharp eye, Gary.
No further, no further questions.
I also need the most updated map. This is not the map that will be presented when I go to the downtown board. This was just the only one that, this was the most updated version that I found. But we're working with the BCRC to include, because one of the things we'll need to do is create like the key of all of the properties that are in this proposed extension and explain what they are, and have photographs, et cetera. But it's not a really extensive process, so doing this now doesn't preclude us from doing another extension in the future.
All right, any other questions from Select Board members? I'm not seeing any questions from attendees. Are there any questions from attendees? All right, well, if we don't have any other questions, I'm wondering if someone would like to make a motion that we extend the designated downtown to Main and Pleasant and Valentine Street?
So moved.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Tom, seconding, good. All right, so, all those in favor, oh, Jean, do you have a question?
No, I'll wait. I just have a little correction, but it's okay, can wait till after the.
Okay, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say no. Any extensions, please indicate that. All right, good. Congratulations, and we hope you have success. I think it would be a success for Bennington.
Shannon, Shannon, can I trouble you to correct the spelling of my last name on the signature page?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. It's a common problem, and I'm, yeah, I'm trying to be consistent to make sure the name's spelled correctly. Thank you.
Yes, we will do that.
So do we have to stop by and sign it?
Well, I believe that you have designated Jeanie to sign it. Is that for most documents these days, so it really just needs Jeanie's signature.
Okay, yeah.
And just to your point, Jeanie, about, you know, good luck, is that by you approving of this, it's not the final piece. The state's downtown board has to actually approve as well, so.
Yeah.
If I could add, Jeanie, I think we have a strong case to make this extension. And I'd want to add particularly the gratitude of Better Bennington Corporation. We're working very closely with Shannon in conjunction, not only with this particular piece, but that broader investigation of downtown that I mentioned earlier. This fits right into that, and I think it's a good moment for both the town and the Better Bennington Corporation.
That's great. Thank you. All right, so we will wait to hear back. Great. All right. Thank you. So next up, we have community policing. So we'll start with the second reading on the body worn cameras, and then move to Safety and Equity Committee Proposal, and then anything else that we want to be discussing. All right, so Bruce, you're up.
Yep, so you've seen this, two weeks ago, there are essentially no changes. There was some discussion about could we make more explicit the process of release? And the answer to that one, I'm going to suggest is no. That the statutory and the relevant state and federal law, which is now explicitly stated, that's the only addition, and the policies of the Town of Bennington regarding release, which basically follows state law, really are what we need to follow. And if we get any, if we try to fashion another piece of language here, that would be a mistake. So, at least in my view. So I'm going to suggest that we leave it as is, and that's, so I will actually move its adoption.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so, any further discussion? I thought I saw a hand. Sarah, your hand is up.
Yep, so I don't have any concerns with this policy as it's written. I just wanted to note that I do have concerns with one of the policies that are references. That's the interim advisory committee protocol. I still continue to be concerned that releasing the video or identity information from completants puts them at risk in retaliation and discourages people from reporting. So as I can vote on this policy, I think that the goal of increasing trust with the community might be undermined by the policy it refers to.
Oh, which, all right. Take me back. So which policy are you, which policy you actually, the duty to disclose, is that what you're, is that the related policy you're talking about?
The Citizen Advisory Committee Protocol.
That's not a policy. It's an interim protocol, and it actually is being reviewed right now. But where? That's a protocol. It's not a policy.
And like I said, this is, I don't have any concerns with this policy. That's just something I wanted to know on record.
About the protocol, that you have problems with the protocol, but it's not in this policy?
No, it's just referenced.
Where's it referenced?
All right, are you, Sarah, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you suggesting that it's in lines six and seven that the release of BWC, Body Worn Camera Recordings to the public shall be in compliance with other policies of the Town of Bennington, as well as relevant in state and federal law? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Because that, because that doesn't refer to the protocol at all. The protocol is not referred to in this policy intentionally.
Okay, I guess that's implied.
Well, I don't imply it, and if anybody wants, it is not implied in my view, but I.
I take that differently. I just wanted to make that noted.
I noted. But, you know, I will just say that we will probably have some version of some release process at some point, but this, this doesn't deal with it. So I get your point. Thank you.
Thanks. And like I said, I don't have any problems with the way this policy is written. I just wanted to note that.
Yep.
Thanks.
I would agree with you.
All right, so are we ready to vote? Any other, any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of the body worn camera policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Any extensions, please indicate. All right, good. That's great. All right, so let's move on to the overview for the proposal for the Community Safety and Equity Board. So this, I think I want to just clarify, we've gotten a number of comments, and some questions about what this proposal was. It's part of a two-step process. The proposal, this proposal primarily addresses the creation of a task force, which would be up to 11 community members, who would explore the name, charge, membership, structure, and scope of a Safety and Equity Decision Making Board. This is not the application. This is a proposal on the process that we're asking for people to give us feedback on. There is an example of a timeline included, and we just arbitrarily chose August as a start date, but it could be earlier than that. It could be later than that. Once the task force finishes, the task force that's in this proposal finishes their work and their recommendations come to the Select Board, then the Select Board will establish a town board to address safety and equity in our community. The working group that worked on this, which would be Bruce and Jean and me, did not want to presuppose that we knew what should be in a Safety and Equity Board. So we really wanted to set up a process for the community to determine, determine those items. The proposal, as I said, is on, was in the packet. It's also on the website. There was a banner article about it. We will take comments until June 4th, so that will give us time to be able to come back to the board with, you know, with updates based on comments that we receive. I do want to urge, early in this process, community researchers did amazing bibliographies on both oversight committees and on community policing. And I would urge everyone in the community to look at those materials. They are great source materials for this next step that we are taking. So I think what I want to do is start with the working group. So Jean, I know, has pulled together some information from the comments we've received. Anything Bruce wants to add, then open it up to the Select Board. Then if any town staff want to make any comments or have any questions, and then open it up to the public. All right, so let's, let's go for this. Jean and Bruce, why don't you guys go up first?
Sure, I'll go. The one thing I just wanted to mention is the name, Safety and Equity, is a working title at this point. I just, we had to figure out what to call it, and that's what we landed on, but that does, that may not stay the same. I just wanted to make that clear. Yeah, I took a glance at all the comments that came in, and I'm going to hit the highlights. I'm not going to read all of them, but I'm going to, you know, read the comments that I think are the most meaningful and who they came from, not a name, but who this person, what her profession is. So the first one is, came from a citizen who happens to be a nurse. This person says that training in mental health is critical. We got a comment from a former police officer who. who believes that an oversight board is a time honored, appropriate and legitimate tool used in professional law enforcement agencies. We had a comment from a citizen who happens to be a member of the clergy, who wants this task force to also include encouragement of the police department. The number of members this person thought was good, that being 11 members. This person is hoping that the task force will reflect diversity in our community. A concern this person had was creating expectations that are too high of the board. We had one citizen who just said that, that they were so pleased that the town was moving forward. And we had another citizen who said, thank you. So that's kind of the gist of what we've heard thus far from public comments on the proposal.
And I would just add one thing, and that is the 11 or so categories, or however many categories there are. The number of categories does not limit the, the task force to a particular look. So yes, we identified making sure that there's at least one BIPOC member of the committee. My anticipation would be as if a number of people of color or indigenous folks apply and they can fit into any number of the categories and will encourage people to fit into as many as, as they deem able to, then there might be many BIPOC members of this committee. I don't think anything is set in stone, but the parameters of those lists were intended to try to create as much diversity in that task force as possible. That's all I had to say.
Great, Bruce. Thank you. Any other select board members? So I know you saw this the same time that the community saw the proposal, you know, due to, to making sure we didn't violate, violate open meeting law. So if you have any questions, you're welcome to ask them. If you want to wait and see what comes out of public comment on this and then come back to you, that's fine too. But any questions right now? Okay. Any staff here have any comments before we move on to public comment? All right. All right. So then I'm going to move on to attendees. Mia, I see you have your hand up. So again, please identify yourself, your town of residence and then let us know what you're thinking.
So my name is Mia Schultz. I'm a Bennington resident and also the Rutland area NAACP president. I found it to be interesting that when Jean read out and chose specific comments that she neglected to comment regarding what the ACLU and the NAACP have said regarding this and has been submitted to you. So therefore.
Ma'am, I'm going to stop you, Mia. I'm going to stop you for just a moment. The comments did not come in until 5:30.
And I am here to read the statement for public record. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting us to comment on the proposed task force. The Rutland area NAACP and American Civil Liberties Union of Vermont write this with great concern for the future of public safety in Bennington. The community has a clear choice to create a meaningful police accountability mechanism to ensure its policing procedures and practices accord with civil liberties and civil rights at a minimum. Or to continue supporting the biased, divisive and harmful policing actions that have plagued the town for many years. As described in detail below, below, meaning this is our statement, this is our letter that was submitted to you. Yes, at 5:30, which you had time to look at. As described in detail below, the proposed task force is deeply flawed, including the lack of meaningful charge or stakeholder inclusion. For these reasons, among others, we oppose the proposal as crafted. After reviewing the current proposal, our organizations questioned the commitment of Bennington's current leadership to establishing a genuine system of police accountability. Those are reflected here below. Starting with number one, the proposed task force is unnecessary and squanders valuable time. While we recognize the value of gathering input from a variety of sources, the select board cannot delegate its responsibility to create a police accountability board, to create a group, to, to a group of volunteers and police officers. In addition, the select board has already examined police oversight models and acted as interim oversight body for the last year. Creating a volunteer task force to reexamine the issues yet again is unnecessary. Community member concerns and public findings related Bennington polit, related to Bennington police tactics have repeatedly described racially biased and willfully harmful practices. Racial disparities in Bennington traffic data continue to go unabated. The select board has heard from townspeople advocating for civilian control and police oversight models on numerous occasions. Ample information on how to create a meaningful oversight body is readily available from the National Organization for, for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement, NACOL, among other organizations. Further delay in establishing actual civilian oversight as envisioned in the proposed task force timeline is unacceptable. It has already been over a year since the International Associations of Chief of Police recommended the creation of a civilian oversight board, leaving that recommendation unfulfilled for another year. And this is, and this is a trouble lack of urgency to address the, the serious civil liberties and civil rights violations committed by the Bennington Police Department. The proposed task force is already an outgrowth of the select board's community quote, end quote, community work group. The select board should survey the multitude of available oversight models and move swiftly to create a community control of policing board with meaningful oversight and authority. Number two, the proposed task force lacks meaningful charge performance again. As proposed, the task force is charged with developing recommendations for the name, scope, structure, membership and responsibilities of a future community board, providing four general areas of consideration, police training recommendations, reviewing complaints, developing, reviewing some of the Bennington policy, police policies and analyzing police data. The proposal's introduction frames the responsibilities of the eventual community board as quote unquote likely, including the same for generic responsibilities. The proposed task force charge is far too open-ended to ensure that genuine police oversight or control will result. As detailed in the attached ACLU Vermont, ACLU Vermont recommendations, oversight requires a community board to have at minimum subpoena power, independence, funding, diverse membership, transparency and policymaking authority. None of these are required by or even discussed in the current proposal. The third thing, this proposed task force process is unduly onerous and fails to include the most impacted by the police department's harmful tactics. IACP's report states, quote, "Some of community, some community members, particularly members of diverse populations feel that if they make a complaint to the police, even in cases where they are the victim of a crime, they are told by the responding officer and the department that they will become the target of, of a criminal investigation themselves." Interviews, hold on, interviews with community members and focus groups suggest that this perception seems to be most prevalent among people who are economically marginalized, LGBTQIA plus or members of racial or ethnic minority groups and those who experience mental illness or are homeless, end quote. The requirement that, that each task force member receives 7.5 hours of criminal justice training before doing any actual task force work will make it difficult for the most impacted, such as the economical, economically marginalized and homeless, to participate. And while ability to attend volunteer meetings varies widely, an inclusive process must, must attempt to allow a diverse cross-section of the most impacted Benningtonians the opportunity to contribute. By requiring quote unquote criminal justice training of dubious value, more members of the community interested in doing the task force work and who are most impacted by the harmful Bennington police tactics will be less likely to join. The proposal does not include any mention of, provided for childcare, transportation, transportation support, expected durations or dates of meetings, or a general time commitment expectation, again, making it less likely that a diverse cross-section of residents will participate. Furthermore, as envisioned, the task force includes 13 or 11 vague categories of people. At the outset, the inclusion of anyone with law enforcement experience on the task board meant to create a police accountability board is likely to create a conflict of interest that will weaken your accountability proposals. Most importantly, the explicit inclusion of one BIPOC community member on the board is tokenism at worst. And it is well known that the select board is engaging in these processes, this process because of a multitude of complaints and ongoing concerns about racially biased policing in Bennington. In addition to the IACP's recognition that a diverse group of marginalizing Benningtonians feel that they cannot trust their police. To provide one seat out of 13 or 11, whichever, to black or indigenous or persons of color insults the efforts of, of black residents who have attempted for years to create meaningful accountability, a meaningful accountability mechanism. Any task force or board must also include the local NAACP, multiple black Bennington, Bennington residents and delegates from other racial justice groups and advocates, among other most impacted Benningtonians, such as the unhoused and economically marginalized. Without a membership that includes the most impacted, the task force will lack legitimacy and will not contribute to the movement for badly needed oversight and accountability in Bennington. Thank you for the opportunity again to comment on the task force proposal. We hope that the select board will reconsider its course and move swiftly, swiftly to propose a meaningful accountability board with the necessary powers. Thank you.
Thanks, Mia. This is, I'm glad you read that because we didn't have time to read it beforehand. So that's helpful. And, you know, this is exactly the purpose of having public comment is for people to both give us their sense of what they're reading and also show us where we're missing things, where we've gotten it wrong, whether, where, you know, where they disagree or agree. So that's, so that's helpful that you just read that. Anyone else have, on attendee or panelists, sorry, select board side, anyone else have comments? All right. All right. So with that, I think that probably closes what we want to do tonight. We will continue to accept comments until Friday, June 4th. And that we're, our next meeting is June 14th. And so we want to, you know, we want to bring back a proposal and another draft at that time. So please, if you have thoughts, please feel free to send them to Bruce, Jean or me. Actually, if you can send it to all three of us, that would be great, but we send it to each other if you don't. So, and you can find our email addresses on the town website under the select board tab. All right. Anything else on this? Are we ready to move on? Okay. Next up, our boards and commissions. All right. So we have received, I think Stu has sent us all of the, let me stop for just one moment. An attendee just raised their hand. Let me, ending in 196. Let me just see if that was for comment on the last agenda item. Hi, person ending in 196. If you would like to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Great. Right. And please give us your name, town of residence and what's on your mind?
Mike Bethel of Bennington. I just heard what you want to propose and I just heard Mia's response to it. I'm in favor of what you, the select board, are trying to do and set up. I think you should do it. I think you should make it as many people of color as you can, because I think that's the value here to get to hear what the people of our town really feel on this board and commission. I am not for a board to go on forever. I think the first panel board, whatever you want to call this, should be given a certain amount of time and then the select board review it to continue it and digest what they've come up with. Mia's dissertation there of everything, nobody's going to be able to satisfy that. But I think.
Mike, I want you to stick with the, please, no personal attacks, please.
I'm not, I'm not personally attacking her. She gave it and she's part of that, that, she's the head one of that organization. I think we should do this. I think we should evaluate it and have the panel come back with recommendations. I do believe that it should be made up of the people that are most affected by this. Is, is even as you can get it out of 11. But there's no way that we're going to be able to satisfy everything first go around. So I do support what the select board is doing or trying to do to get this in hand so that we can control the attitude that people may have against our police force and the outside image that our police force has been tainted with.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. I, I do want to say, and I also, I want to address the, the question that was, were raised during public, the public comment period where a person was not able to stay for this part. The task force does have a six month window on it, so it does have a timeframe. As Bruce said earlier, the, the breadth of representation on the task force is represented by the 13 categories, but you, but it is not intended that we have one of each. That is not the intention. Stu, did you want to hop in here?
Can I just, can I make one, one comment also, which, you know, we're, we're hearing feedback and understandably so that people are skeptical of having an active police officer on the task force. And I just want to remind people that we had an active police officer on the policy committees and it was incredibly beneficial for that process. So I guess I feel like we have a history of working well with a, with an active police officer in that capacity and hopefully that would continue on this task force as well.
Jean, that's, that's a really good point. And I think the other point that we want to make is that we have done a fair amount of poking around to see how other, or how other communities have set up task forces to determine what their boards would look like. And the broader the representation, we also have business community on there. The broader the representation from the community, the better the board will be. Because then you are representing the full community and you have the full community support. So that, that is something that we did quite intentionally. Stu, did you have a comment?
No, I.
No, I actually raised my hand to talk about boards and commissions.
Okay, all right, all right. Okay, all right. In terms of how the task force will be picked, there will be an application process, and the select board will be the body that is choosing the members of the task force. So, all right, so let's move on back to the boards and commissions. We're not going to make any appointments tonight. The reason being, so we had 16 applications come in, which is fantastic. 10 were from people who were either had never served on a board before, or wanting to serve on a board that they have not served on before. So we have more applicants than we have positions, which is a great, is absolutely wonderful, and not always the place where we find ourselves. I will say that the Historic Preservation Board was the hot ticket board this time. Lots of applicants, lots of applicants. And so I know we all agreed that we would interview the new panelists, and that would be 10 of them. I would like to suggest that we also interview the two current members of the Historic Preservation Board who are applying for reappointment, and so make it 12 that we interview. And to do that, I'm thinking we probably need two days, so I was wondering, and we can do this offline if this starts to be hairy, but Monday, June 7th, and Thursday, June 10th, if we could do them, are two days that week, so that on the 14th, we can do the appointments. So.
I'd like us to stay away from June 10th, that's my anniversary.
Okay, we won't do June 10th, all right. We could do a really long June 7th, you know, if there may be somebody that needs to do a different day. Sarah, please go ahead.
Could we just schedule this offline?
Let's schedule it offline, because it's going to be more complicated than we.
Yeah, I think so.
The idea is that we will have interviews before the June 14th meeting and be able to make appointments at the June 14th meeting.
And Jean, the purpose in my raising my hand is we've received a delayed
Yes.
request, delayed reappointment request today, so I have an additional, this is an incumbent that is currently sitting on a committee who is asked to be reappointed and apologizes for being late in applying.
Yes, and I was counting that person. So I think, okay, great. And that should, and you'll send that out to everybody?
Yes, I will.
Okay, perfect. Any other comments? Are we ready to move on from this? All right, all right, so let's now move on to the sidewalk discussion, and I see RJ has joined us, which is great. So we have great materials in our packet, and we, it looks like we have financial issues, aesthetic issues, temperature issues, so I don't know, Stu and RJ, do you want to start the conversation?
Well, I'd be glad, I'd be glad to start. This proposal is being put forward, thanks in large part to RJ and his desire to actually do more work for less cost, which is something I think we all appreciate. He had suggested this, and Dan and I took a look at it. There is a substantial savings by using asphalt pavement. And then the question really comes down to, is where is it appropriate? And what we have provided you tonight is a map that indicates where we think, and it's shown in red, where we should not be using asphalt, because that is, it is the current downtown, it is Main Street and North and South Street. The rest of the community would be open to it if you folks approve. Or if you would like us to extend the boundaries where asphalt would not be considered, we can also take a look at that. That's essentially my comments. RJ did do some temperature checking on one day and found the differences in temperatures not too dramatic. I know there is a concern voiced by others here that asphalt, because of its color, retains more heat on hot days than perhaps concrete does. And I guess we would open it up and try to answer your questions or concerns.
Okay, any questions from the board? No questions from the board? Oh, okay, Jean, go.
Just couldn't get my buttons pushed quick enough. I am not an expert in concrete sidewalks, I don't pretend to be, but I'm curious if there are things that can be done to increase the life of concrete sidewalks? Like, are there other compositions of the materials in concrete? Is there a different way of, what's the underlayment? What about if the concrete were thicker? Drainage, you know, all that sort of stuff? I guess I'm just wondering if there's a way that we could increase the life of the concrete sidewalks that we do have, and when we especially lay a new sidewalk? So that's my biggest question.
Well, we do have sidewalks in town that are stamped, that are 120 years old, long before any great additives or perfectly separated stones. So Washington Avenue, for example, there's a few stamps up there of the contractor that did it at the time, and we have the town report that also has that year that was installed in Washington Avenue. So we definitely have proof concrete lasts a long time, and we also have proof that blacktop lasts a long time. Blacktop's definitely a lot cheaper, a lot, extremely a lot faster to put down than Concrete, through the years, we have added fibers to strengthen the concrete. We spray it now with sealer. The sealer makes a huge difference. I think Silver Street, what you're familiar with, was the first street we ever sealed with that, and that was many years ago now, and it still beads up with water. It hasn't broken down the face of it at all. Curing the concrete is huge. You don't handle it too much, you don't add too much water, you know, there's so many variables with concrete to make a great product. And we do very good at it now. I'm not saying that at all. We have quite a few projects this summer we're going to be working on with concrete. School Street and Pleasant Street will be done this week. The concrete work, that was a pretty good-sized project. Maple Street is, will be concrete near the high school, between Gage and the high school. That'll all be concrete pavement and curb along, like, School Street. We're hoping, pleading that, I'm pleading that hopefully you allow us to put concrete, slip form, curb, and paved sidewalk on Washington Avenue and on Dewey Street. Reason being, we have all these waterline grants this year, all this water main work, and the town's responsible, in order to save money by hiring contractors to do this work when they're done with the water main, we're doing all this work. So normally, in a good year, we may do 3,000 feet of concrete sidewalk, and this year, this year we have 5,740 feet of sidewalk and 8,170 feet of curb that has to be done in this coming fiscal year. We got off and running soon, luckily. We have a good start, but there's no way we can get all this work done. It's vacation time, a lot of the guys are on vacation, very small crew. And pavement is a good finished product. It's smoother than the concrete, you don't have to cut joints in it. It's easier to walk on. If a resident has a water sewer break, we can just cut out a square of the blacktop and just buy as much as we need to fill that square. Concrete now has a six-and-a-half-yard minimum load charge, so it's going to cost a resident $810 to fix a little five-by-five sidewalk area, which is outrageous, but there's nothing we can do about that. I can really go on for days. I was a concrete guy until a couple of years ago. I started looking at 15, 20-year-old sidewalks in town, and they've held up extremely well. You don't get the frost eaves that you get with the concrete. You don't, tree roots isn't an issue. When the concrete goes up with a freeze-saw cycle, it doesn't like to come back down sometimes. Last couple of years, I think we figured that out pretty well, we haven't had that problem as much, but you definitely, blacktop won't last as long as concrete, but it'll be in good shape for a long time, and it's more economical. As we all know, the cost of everything is going through the roof, if you're talking lumber, concrete, everything. So, yeah, I plead, in order to get some of our sidewalk work done, that, as much as we have to get done, that you allow us in the outskirts to get blacktop sidewalk. It'll still have concrete curb, so be nice and uniform, it'll look nice, but it'll just be a different material.
So RJ, a couple more questions for you. So Gary, you're up.
So I have a couple of concerns with it, not so much in the rural areas, but certainly in areas within our community where we have a paved road, the concrete curb and a concrete walk, there's definitely clearly a separation there. And once you start to add the pavement, it becomes less of a separation of where the road is, where the sidewalk is. And I think RJ, that clearly a base, getting a good base is critical for either one of those, the concrete or the pavement. And when you have a good base, concrete holds up longer than pavement. And I think aesthetically, and I think for longevity, that concrete's a better material for our streets inside the town.
In 100 years, sure, I agree.
Well, we are, I mean, I think that's the issue, is we're not doing sidewalks for a 10-year or 20-year situation, we want it to do, like you said, 120 years. We want to be able to.
It's that old, but it's in horrible, horrible, horrible shape if you go to Washington Avenue.
You didn't say that before.
It should have been replaced many years ago, but we know this waterline project. And basin drainage is the key to everything, but, yeah, we have to do more with last, the budget's been cut the last two years for sidewalks, so it's hard to keep, it's hard to keep our head above water by 2,500 feet. We have 40 miles of sidewalk, so 2,500 feet of concrete sidewalk a year isn't quite keeping our head above water.
So.
Go ahead, Gary.
Could I respond to Gary just as well? So Gary, I heard you say that you're okay with perhaps those types of sidewalks outside of the, I don't know what area, but I think that's the discussion we're having tonight is, where do we draw that line? Sounds like there's general consensus, maybe I'm wrong, but that there's a certain area that needs to stay concrete, but maybe there's areas outside of that that we could discuss an alternative. And so I guess that's why we're here today, is how do we make that decision? You know, I know that RJ has to do some work pretty quickly, so it doesn't have to happen tonight, but I'd like to set up, at least set up a process where we can make that decision, so we can give him some direction.
I mean, something that seems reasonable to me, and I don't know how you create this as, like, where it happens, but the sidewalk that goes up to the middle school, it's pulled away from the roadway, it seems like a natural, the pavement is a natural material that would work there. Going up Elm Street, it seems like that would be an odd place to have pavement. Those kind of in-town, more concentrated areas where the cars are really close to the curbs.
So it may be that we want to form a subgroup of the select board to look at that a little more. I think let's get our questions out, and then let's see what our next step should be. I think Jim, you had some questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Firstly, I want to say that I'm a resident of School Street, and I have watched with great interest the work that our town cement crew has done. And RJ, I want to compliment you and the cement foreman on how beautifully work has been done. It's meticulous, it's well-planned, it's well-executed. And I come from a voice of experience. When I graduated from high school, one of my first jobs was working for the town cement crew, so you know, I know a little bit about it. And I helped lay some of that cement that still is around town, including in front of the old Gibney Funeral Home, where Mrs. Gibney asked me to come in and help her move something. It wasn't really what I expected, but it still stays in my memory. And I don't remember the, I don't remember the man's name, but I helped put him in his final resting place, and he wasn't wearing shoes. Anyhow, you know, I was really reluctant to endorse the idea of using blacktop, but I've got to tell you, at a savings of better than half, it would be really foolish for the town not to endorse using blacktop in areas of the town. But anyway, RJ, I just want to compliment your guys for the work that they've done, it's been exceptional.
Great, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna, so we've got at least five more hands. So Jean, I think you're up next, and then Sarah, and then maybe me. All right.
Okay, I'm just curious, RJ, so the sidewalk that's currently on Washington Street has lasted for 100 years, why, what, why aren't we doing that? Not just we, why aren't people laying sidewalks like they were done 100 years ago, if it's lasted so long?
We are, we saw them better now, I believe, but.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so they're still there, but it's in terrible shape?
Yeah.
Oh, I misunderstood, I thought you were saying it's in remarkable shape for being 100 years old.
Not at all.
And the other question I had, on Congress Street, behind the rec center where it's blacktop, that doesn't have a cement curb.
It doesn't, nor did it have before. That was another horrible blacktop sidewalk that would no curb, and it wasn't very passable yet last summer. And last summer with COVID, we were, it was tough for us to do too much concrete work because it requires a lot of men close together. So we did only blacktop last year, replaced bad blacktop sidewalk.
Okay. I thought maybe it was an experiment, like you were just sort of testing it out.
That was blacktop prior to, and there's an older lady that lives on that street, I wish I knew the circumstances, but she's lived there. I wish I knew the circumstances, but she's lived there for like sixty years or something. And I think, I could be wrong, but when the lady moved in is the year they blacktopped that sidewalk. And we replaced it last year and she was very happy about that. But, um, typically normally it wouldn't be like that. It would be a concrete curb, just like the sidewalk has.
Okay.
Although, although it would be raised seven inches and the sidewalk would be seven inches higher.
Okay.
Top behind the six inch curb.
Okay, thank you.
You're up.
I've got two quick ones and then, um, so how long can asphalt sidewalk last? And also, um, what, what's your take on plowing either one? What's easier and how's this transition?
I'll start with the plowing because that's easy. The sun draws to the darker, um, than the white, uh, color. So, and it's smoother. So the plow, the operator's not feeling every joint through the plow because there's no suspension on those sidewalk machines. You feel every, every little, um, bump, um, when you're plowing them. So it's definitely easier, um, to plow the, uh, asphalt sidewalks. Um, I'm sorry, what was your first question?
Um, about how long do you think the asphalt sidewalks last in comparison to the concrete?
It, it's a guess. Um, like I say, that woman fifty, sixty years, it'll still be in good shape. Um, it is more apt to crack like, like blacktop roads do, other than heave and, um, stay up. There's less ups and downs, uneven surfaces due, because it doesn't need expansion joints. So it may crack, but it'll be smoother.
Okay. And then, um, for Jean, I guess I would just, um, possibly propose that we do a subcommittee just for the sake of time. And yeah, I think, you know, this might be a longer discussion and we're already at seven thirty.
Well, unfortunately, we haven't gotten to the, or we haven't gotten to, uh, community members yet. So Jim, I see you have another question, like, yeah, can, short and sweet.
Yes, I will. You know, RJ, you know, I'm, I'm harkening back to my time on the, uh, cement crew. And we also, I was also on the highway crew. And one of the, uh, increased benefits of, uh, using black, blacktop, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it's more easily repairable. You, you, you don't have to take a grinder to, um, uh, a piece of blacktop. You just chip it off and, and patch. Is that correct?
Repair is substantially cheaper and yes, less work, no forming. Uh, blacktop's done by hand. It, it, there's many good savings as far as using blacktop. Do I want to throw away the forms and do all blacktop? Absolutely not. But, and we'll always do black, or we'll, we'll always do concrete. But, um, yeah, if we can get up, out of the center of town and do some blacktop, it would be definitely beneficial.
All right. So RJ, I have two, two community members that have questions for you. So first, um, phone ending in one nine six, please identify yourself and ask your question or make your comment. You will need to hit star, push star six to unmute. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
It's Mike Bethel again. This is to RJ. Um, I asked you a few years ago to change the pattern on the concrete because the wheelchair, especially the power wheelchairs with that big gap in between.
Yes.
Make, makes a heck of a problem and you just admitted it does for your plows where, where you cement.
We've done better than that. We've been on the newer sidewalks for the last two or three years. They're, they, they still have to have joints, but they're not nearly as, uh, as abrupt as they used to be.
Well, you just did the ones over by the TD Bank across from Jimmy's, Jimmy, uh, Carroll's house, actually, and there's still that old pattern.
They do have expansion joints, but back, back years ago when you brought that up, um, we definitely tried to put the least amount of joints in that we possibly can.
Okay, if you can't change it.
Mental no. They, they have to be there, but we definitely make a mental note when the guys are doing it, not to make them any deeper than we have to.
And you can't just have the seam there like you do over here by the old, uh, Anne Marie Sub Shop on Gate Street? And they've been there forever.
I'll be honest, I don't know what shape those sidewalks in Anne Marie's are in.
Well, I go by them every day because I live on that street and they're very good. But anyway, and the other comment is I do believe what RJ is saying and Dan Monk said, that the select board should look at blacktopping more if it's that much of a savings. Not in the downtown, not in historic places, but where it's not really necessary, I, I, I would support the blacktop to save some money for a while. But thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, next up, um, telephone ending in zero two five. Whoops. Zero two five. Please press star six.
Hi, Nancy White Bennington calling back. Um, hello?
Yes, thank you, Nancy.
Hi, just a little history. About twenty-five years ago, the town tried this. You replaced the sidewalk on Spring Street, you did the driveways and blacktop. The neighbors weren't happy. I believe it was Elm Street was done the same way and the neighbors raised such a fuss, they went back and put the concrete in. And I think Stu announced that the sidewalks that were concrete would stay that way. When you added them on the edge of town, new ones, they would be blacktop. I, I think the look of the concrete, I think the people, I think our neighborhoods deserve concrete. Um, many of us, I've been waiting thirty years now. I guess my sidewalk might get done next year. But if it's good enough for the downtown, it's good enough for the residential areas unless it's on the edge of town. And we were also promised at least fifteen years ago that we were going to have a list so that we'd know, we would know the order that sidewalks were going to get done in town. And I think that's something that the board has to get out there so that other people like me who've been waiting for thirty, forty years to have their street done know, have some idea to know when they're going to get it done. So I hear what you're saying about the cost, but I think somebody, especially a homeowner deserves to have the concrete in front of their homes. And if you're running new blacktop sidewalks, you need to do them on the edge of town. We need to be consistent with the downtown.
Thanks, Ms. That's, yeah, I think that's very helpful. Those are very helpful comments. So, all right, so I think we've exhausted all of people's thoughts. Um, I would look for a subcommittee so that would be no more than three people. I'm looking for, sorry. Yes, look at that. You know what I'm saying, even when I'm.
I'll volunteer.
So I see Gary and Sarah and Jim, are you volunteering to be up there?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you guys are a subcommittee. I think we all are feeling like the, the red area is not quite good enough. Um, so, uh, well, you will, uh, work with RJ, is that? What is, what's the thought here? Just work among yourselves, see what you think and then bring it back to, bring it back to the select board and, and we'll have another discussion about it at the, at the meeting on the fourteenth. Why don't we do that?
What, so may I suggest that Gary, um, Jim and Sarah elect a representative to contact me, whoever the, and then we can, Gary or Jim or Sarah and I can put together a, you know, a meeting schedule.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So, um, so once you guys get together, I think work with Dan. So that's great. Thank you, Dan.
Do you think the fourteenth is too soon?
The fourteenth is the next meeting. Um, if you can do, uh, you think, do you want to move it two meetings out? I, I'm just worried about the summer schedule, RJ.
Yeah, RJ's got to move on a couple of things, projects.
Yeah, I'm starting doing it soon, two weeks, less than two weeks.
Should we chat with RJ maybe within the next couple of days and see?
Would you guys like to ride around and look at blacktop sidewalks, concrete sidewalks? Take dumpers?
RJ, I think, um, I think the, the status quo right now is that it's concrete. Plus we've made it, made a, uh, another decision. And I, you know, I know that some streets like Coolidge ended up being blacktop even though I would have thought, you know, I'm not quite sure what the decision-making process is right now, but I think the group is going to need time to look at what they consider to be the downtown and then bring it back to the select board. So if it's not the fourteenth, then it's going to be that second meeting in June. But I think if we can do it by the fourteenth, that would be great. Is that possible?
I, I think, I think we can get in touch to get in and then, uh, figure something out either to, uh, probably tomorrow or the next day and then get in touch with Dan and RJ. Does that work out? Jim, Carrie and Gary?
Makes sense to me.
Okay.
You can jump on it.
Yeah.
Does that work out, Dan? RJ?
Yep. I, I may, so Sarah, I may be out the next couple of days, but, um, just make sure to copy RJ on anything and, and he'll, he can jump in if, if I'm not around.
Jean, you have a question?
Yeah, I'm wondering, um, to facilitate, um, their work and, you know, ha, make it happen as, as quickly as possible. If we have questions that we would like them to explore, can we send them on?
Yes.
So that, you know, when they bring their proposal, we're not asking questions that they can't answer then. We should ask them now.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's a good idea. All right. All right, let's move on.
Jean, I'd just like to make a recommendation, um, that RJ be the one, uh, to organize us to, uh, go and look at, uh, the sidewalks, you know, unless RJ, uh, objects.
No, I would love to bring you around to show you.
You may or may.
Your life, what?
Yeah, you may, I mean, they're all over town. You may, you may not need a tour, but you guys decide that. Okay. So we're taking, taking it on. All right. Okay, so we're moving on to agenda item number eight, um, which is the Public Information Officer or Communication Coordinator, I think is, is another way that it's been framed. So Stu, I'm going to turn this over to you to sort of lay it out and then.
Thank you.
About it. Thank you.
Well, for, for quite some time now, you folks and others in the community have been concerned about, uh, our inability, uh, or ineffectiveness in getting out the word into the community about, uh, uh, whatever is happening in, in town. Uh, our website is, is old and cumbersome to operate, uh, as is the, the police department's website. Uh, we also have a town clerk's website, a zoning department website, um, all of which are acting independently of one another. And as part of my evaluation last year, it was made clear to me that the board would like to see some change in the way we approach public information and communication with the community. Uh, fortunately, they, there are funds available in next year's budget, uh, also not originally dedicated to this, uh, position, but it would allow us to fund this position in the first year without impacting, uh, the budget or the tax rate. Um, and once it's built in, obviously the, the budget would be able to carry it forward. So, um, I am recommending, and this is a position that has been put together uh, by Dan and Shannon and myself, uh, the creation of a public information coordinator. And I, I'll just quickly read the job summary. Um, this individual would be responsible for assisting with the creation and implementation of all public information initiatives. Will oversee project management and process issues for the entire town of Bennington. Uh, under, certainly under management supervision, this person would prepare and provide public information to the community, coordinate responses to public records requests, oversee multi-departmental or multi-town projects, ensure that we are in compliance with all of the policies and procedures regarding public information and its dissemination. Um, I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us, uh, to bring an individual on board who's got some expertise in, certainly in the field of, uh, writing and commu, communication, uh, in the field of, uh, IT, uh, because we certainly could use the help. Uh, we currently contract out our, uh, website, uh, upgrades. We, uh, contract out, uh, how information appears on the police department website, uh, with another individual. And, uh, we obviously don't consolidate that effort into, um, one website with, with very easy and accessible access to other websites that might be, uh, separate but not apart. And I think that's the key. We're going to try to bring all of this stuff together under one umbrella. Uh, we would need to create a position. Um, I admit that we have been stumbling along for quite some time in how we communicate, how we answer requests for information and, uh, how we get the word out. When, when Bennington is doing something well, we're slow to, to get that word out. Uh, when we're reacting to criticisms, we're slow in getting that word out. And so we're kind of left to constantly be in a reaction mode. And I'd like to see us turn this around and become sort of a proactive mode. And, and I think this position can do that, um, if you folks approve. We are, um, hopeful that you'll consider this in a positive, positive light. It is one of the things that you pointed out to me in my evaluation. We needed to improve communication and I think this, this probably is, is the best way forward for us.
Thank you. All right. I think the order of the first hands were Jim, Tom, and then Bruce. So Jim.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, Stu, the question that I have, and I've looked over this, uh, proposal, um, pretty carefully, I think. Um, the, the one concern that I have is that will, you know, this, this position uh, have editorial control and the release of information? Or will there be some oversight on your part?
There would, yes, there will be oversight, uh, on, on the part of, uh, the manager, the assistant manager. Uh, this person will not be working in a vacuum, but we certainly would hope to find somebody who has, uh, good, good editorial skills, can put together effective, uh, press releases uh, and effective responses to requests for information. Um, but yes, uh, the manager is ultimately responsible for what comes out of the offices.
Okay, well, I, I would like to recommend, if I may, um, to, uh, include that in the, this job description that it will be the old, you know, it would be incumbent and, uh, upon the, uh, town manager to oversee, um, whatever is published. Uh, I mean, really, do we want somebody that is just going to, you know, willy-nilly be able to say, okay, this is what we're putting out? Um, um, and, uh, without, you know, some oversight?
We, we try not to be too willy-nilly here, but.
Uh, yeah, sure.
All right. Um, thank you, Jim. Tom, I think you're next.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I think everybody here knows that I've been advocating for, for redoing these websites for, for a long time. Um, so I was happy to see this come through. Uh, one thing, I took the liberty of showing this to a couple of friends of mine that work in IT, um, to try to get an idea, um, of, if the duties and responsibilities and so forth were, were, were realistic or on course. And they both keyed in on the same exact thing. Um, and that is in numbers two and five, where we talk about creating and updating the websites. They both expressed that creating a website and then maintaining it, um, further down the road are completely different skillsets. Um, and that often, uh, the people that actually create the content.
And that often, the people that actually create the content, the, the platform, not the content, but the actual website itself tend to be better paid. And a couple of them said not to stereotype, but not the folks you want creating the, the, the content necessarily, because they're, they're geekier, I guess. I don't know. But I think that's something we need to think about in that if we expect the person to be creating and updating, their, their fear was that the person would set the website up and then no longer be fulfilled by the job, because it's not what they're, they, they've chosen to go into that particular area of technology. That's it.
Very, very well taken, Tom. Thank you.
That's great. Bruce, you're up next.
Thank you, Jeanne. And Tom, I agree with you on that point as well. I would also say, while I, I support this position, I, I will say it's not a substitute for, and get ready for the P-word, it's not a substitute for making policy. And part of Jim's question is a policy question. And I know that there is, it will not be a, I still think we need to make sure that we have a public information policy that with, that the board will take on in addition to this so that this person and the town staff have guidance on, on how we want that kind of work to be done. So it is my hope, I'm not suggesting that the, that it was left out. I just want to make sure that, that you understand that my positive vote doesn't mean that I will not be pushing for policy that drives this process. Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, Bruce.
Yeah, I think we all agree on that too, Bruce. I mean, number three in the duties and responsibilities does, does indicate that town manager would be ultimately responsible, but that's not a substitute for policy. Right? Jean, you're up.
Yeah, I, I also agree with Tom. I was thinking that design skills, and I think that's what, you know, Tom was kind of referring to, is design skills is, is really crucial. And Stu, this is more for you. I'm thinking, would it be better, maybe, I don't, Shannon's still on the call. She may be gristling when I say this. If this person reported directly to Shannon and then, when necessary, could solicit input from you and Dan?
Oh, my, my, my vision for this position is that this, this individual would be located in the Community Development Department, a second employee within that department. Shannon's goals and responsibilities really focus on developing the community through recreational and other opportunities through economic development. This person would be essentially a coworker who would be, in my mind, an equivalent individual, not necessarily under Shannon's control, but certainly a partner in, in the activities that she would perform and the activities that, that Dan and I are involved in that all relate to the development of a better community for us all. That's the way I would envision it.
Thanks, Stu. I think that's a, that's a helpful clarification. As you know, I also had concerns about that. Shannon, you have a question? You have a comment on this?
I, I was just going to weigh in that while there are, there's a lot going on in community development right now. Really, all the town departments deserve their due. I think, you know, our buildings and grounds, that our, our highway department and, you know, the things that are happening with planning. And, you know, every single town department is doing amazing work. And we're not really able to tell the story. Because as Stu was saying, most of the communication, I mean, really, it's just been sort of a non-stop process. You know, we had COVID to respond to. And we had, you know, the summer camp at Southern Vermont College. And, you know, all of the work that's happening with the police department right now. And I think, I think like a decade ago, this was sort of just a side piece, you know, that people would pick up here and there, but it's really become the norm. And I think it's part of being part of the modern era. You know, it's, it's interesting that the SVSCU also recently hired a similar position for some of the same reasons. So I think it's going to be a huge improvement for, for all of town communication to have this position.
Yeah, I just want to make one more comment. Sorry, Gary. I think having a dedicated person, it will, it's just going to make it so much easier for everyone. And there will, there will be so much more consistency in the messaging, which is so important. So, yeah.
Okay, Gary, the floor is yours now.
Okay. It was just a quick question. So as I understand it, this is about creating the content for the website. But you, you were talking about zoning and the different departments that are going to be involved in this. Do you envision an upgrade of the website that needs to happen? Some substantial upgrade of that, that would be a precursor to this person coming on? And, and is that in the works already? Yeah. Is there funding for that? Yes, it's, it is not in the works. I would think that this, this individual would, would help oversee that upgrade. Not necessarily, as, as Thomas suggested, there, there probably are two different skillsets to actually designing a, a website and actually updating a website. So I would think that this person would, would help us get to that next level with our website. Whether that means we, we have to find funds to contract it out or whether we work with existing contractors to, to do a better design of what we have. But yes, Gary, I, I think part of this involves bringing our websites up to a much higher level, a much higher bar, so to speak. And none of us currently have necessarily the skill or the time to do that. And that's why I think this position is important to us if we're going to make that step. Well, and I think the, creating the website so that it's easier for community members to be able to get in, move around, the information that they're looking for is really important, too. And then, of course, having that information developed there for people to see is equally important. So it's kind of like Tom was saying, that those two pieces go together, not necessarily the same person.
Right.
Dan, you have your hand up.
So, thank you. I think it's important and that everyone remembers, including Stuart, Shannon, and me, that just because we have a public information coordinator on board doesn't mean we have, we aren't going to be responsible for coming up for the content of these websites. It's not a pass on that. Someone who has the expertise to guide us and will say, you know, I need this information for this website. And then we still have to create that, you know, at least create an outline of that information. We may rely on that person to write it and make it more organized. But, you know, this person is really the, the tech, more technical person. We hope has some good verbal skills as well. But, you know, we can't, we are the ones who have the information about all of our departments. So we have to give that to this person. But this person can coordinate that, pull it out of us, make sure that we're consistently getting the message out. So, you know, I, I do agree with Tom that we can't rely on somebody to do the creation and of the website itself and the content. We're going to have to really be responsible for that content. But the coordinator is going to make sure that, that he, that he chases that down and gets it into a form that's, that's accessible for the, for the public. At least that's the way we've discussed it.
But Dan, it, it feels like there's also the issue of we do want someone who has good written and oral communication skills. Because we do need someone that can respond to FOIA requests. We do need somebody that's pushing information out to the public before they're asking us for it. And, and when they do ask us for information, that we get it out to them. So it may be that we need to do, it sounds like maybe staff need to do a little bit more rethink. And Tom, I do see your hand up. A little bit more rethink on how to separate out the, the two pieces here, that this is not just going to be one individual. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate for the folks at home that are considering whether this is, is necessary. You know, when, when you look at a place where you're, if you're thinking of moving someplace, one of the first things you do is Google that town. And one of the first things they're going to see is the town's website. So it's very important, I think, that, that we, you know, get it up to, to standards. And so I, I'm really, really, really happy to see this proposal.
Yeah, I agree. I want to go to one community comment and then let's bring it back to talk about next steps. So, ending in 196, please unmute yourself and state your name and let us know what's on your mind.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not for this at this point. I think you've got enough staff over there that you could reshuffle some of their job descriptions, maybe get rid of some of the obsolete things. We have a town manager, we have an assistant town manager, we have Shannon Basadi. Shannon Basadi has an assistant, Dan has an assistant, Stu probably has more than one assistant. Let me tell you something that I learned last night. The MAU, can you hear me?
Yes, Mike. We can hear you.
The MAU is thinking of floating a three-plus something million dollar bond to high school for a new football field in March. That sixty, sixty, will pay sixty, sixty percent of that over time. You've got to stop spending money like this at this time. If you need to set up a new website, go out and hire somebody to do that. But don't put somebody on the payroll. I noticed nobody said what this individual was going to cost in salary and benefits. What is this, what is this person going to cost in salary and benefits?
Stu, do you want to respond?
I'm guessing in the range of eighty thousand a year.
Yes, eighty thousand salary, or is that benefits too?
Initially, that would be salary and benefits.
That's a lot of money right now. I think you should hire somebody to set up our website better. I think you people at the town hall have enough staff now, for now. And it is the manager's position and the assistant manager's position to get this word out. I also believe that Mr. Monks, if he's the assistant town manager, could let go of his zoning part and for eighty thousand dollars, if you're going to spend it, free him up to do this and make a new zoning administrator.
Thanks, Mike.
But right now, this isn't going to go over well at eighty thousand dollars.
All right. Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
All right. So can, let's, it sounds like we need to do a little bit more discussing on how to break out the various parts of this and bring it back for the next meeting.
Yep. We'll, we'll be back to you on June 14th.
All right, that's good, because we want to see this happen. Thank you. All right. Next, it is managers report. Stuart, what do you have for us this evening?
Yeah, I don't have a lot just in, in kind of announcements here. There are at least several, several events that are coming to the Recreation Center property, including some gardening events at the, at the community garden and a new child's recreational area in the Bradford Street, Gate Street corner of the property that will be utilized by Head Start and others, as I understand it. So those things are coming to the recreation programs at, at the Recreation Center. As you know, the groundwater reclassification comment period ends May 28th. The state is now considering a reclassification document that will actually identify only the non-potable water sources as being, not being able to be utilized by residents without specific drill, drill design or well design. And those that are currently potable and have been will be so designated. So their, their, the state has heard the concerns that people have raised. And I think we're going to see a reclassification program in order that will be a lot more flexible than what was initially forecast. So that's good news. And then the last piece I have has to do with the mask resolution. Back in May 25th and June 8th, this board adopted a resolution requiring the wearing of face coverings. And we amended it on June 8th to allow for additional guidance. We now find ourselves in a situation where the governor has reduced the strictness of mask wearing, especially for those people who are vaccinated. And initially, I was thinking that we would just leave the resolution in place and let the governor, governors' orders carry through. But I think we place people and businesses in, in direct conflict with the governor's orders if we in fact do not repeal the resolution and allow the governor, governors' orders to take precedence here in Bennington. So it's your, it's your call. I didn't list it as an action item because I wasn't expecting to seek action. And perhaps you can consider this over the next couple of weeks. But I think we need to think about where, where the state is heading and where, where this resolution leaves us under the, under the present direction and guidance from the state of Vermont and the CDC. We're already starting to see stores allowing people to enter the store without a mask if they are in fact vaccinated. Other stores are not loosening up that fast. And that's what the governor's order contemplates, that we leave it to the businesses to make their determination. And I can tell you that we are considering reopening the town offices here on June 1st. But we will be requiring people who enter the building to be masked, regardless of whether they're vaccinated or not. And our people will be masked when dealing with those people. But other than that, they may not be required to wear a mask when they're working in their work site or with other employees if everyone is vaccinated. So we're, we're looking to loosen our restrictions here, get the building open again, which some people in the community think is high time. And I think you're, you're going to start to see, if the governor continues this process, that, that this kind of a resolution will actually be counterproductive.
Thank you, Stuart. So I think we had already talked at agenda setting about putting the mask resolution on the June 14th meeting to talk with it. And I think, Stu, as you and I have discussed, as many, way more businesses have signs that say you still need to wear a mask when you come.
Oh, I, I, I don't disagree.
So, but we, let's put it on the July 14th agenda, if that's okay. We've got a lot of things going on, but I see we have two.
You mean June 14th, Jean?
June 14th, sorry. I keep, yes, June 14th. Let's not skip a month. I see we have two hands, Shannon and then Jim.
I just, Stu mentioned a few things happening. I just wanted to put some dates out there for some community events. So the Rex Center Green Space, we have an event happening at noon this Wednesday. It's called Reimagining the Rex Center Green, because we have some funding to fence off the area to make it safe for children's programming and other community programming. So everyone's welcome to attend at noon. And that discussion will keep going for a while as we develop it. And June 5th is the date for workshops at the community garden. I think they'll start at 10:00. Jean, is that correct?
Ten to 12.
Ten to 12. And then June 8th is the first kickoff event at the new stage at Merchants Park, also known as the Splashpad Park. And that's going to be Soul Steps. It's an African-American step dancing group that was founded, well, one of the founders went to Williams College and founded their step dance troupe. That she's now based in New York City, is coming back to the area, and is going to do a special performance from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on June 8th. And there's also going to be a fun band opening that show up. So that's also free, very family-friendly, great way to celebrate school being out.
Super. Thank you, Shannon. Jim, do you have a question, comment?
Just a comment, really, about the mask resolution. You know, I, I was a very strong proponent, proponent of masking. And right now, I think we tonight should rescind the.
the, uh, the mask, uh, resolution. Businesses can still, if they so choose, to, um, make, uh, requirements of business owners. You know, it's like, uh, what is it? No shoes, no shirt. No entry. I mean, businesses could ask people to wear a tutu and dangly earrings if they want. You know, the, in order to gain entrance. So I real, I really think that, you know, getting this off the table and, uh, getting it done tonight would be easy and effective. And I'm gonna make a motion that we rescind the, the resolution.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Does someone wanna second that?
I'll second that, surprisingly. I know there's a lot of families out there that are struggling with that, that have children in their household. But I think, um, right now, there are people out there that are just not following the ordinance and we might be counterproductive at this moment.
Okadok. All right, so we have a motion on the table. Is there any more discussion? Jean, is your que, is your hand up for that or something else? Okay, any other discussion on this motion? All right. All those in favor of rescinding the motion tonight, please say aye.
Can I have a question first? Just answered.
Yeah.
Sorry to wait this long, but is it appropriately before us? That's my, I guess that's my question. I, I realize that it was in our packets. Uh, it was not on the agenda. We normally don't handle things that are not on the agenda, that we haven't given the community
That's true.
Good enough notice. And Jim, I might, I, I probably do agree with you. But, you know.
It's not necessary. Bruce, it's not that it'd be an agenda item for us to vote on anything. And this is a very simple, straightforward red, or, uh, rectifying of, of a problem. Um, and we can leave this up to, uh, local businesses to enforce whatever standards they like.
Jim, I'm not asking, I'm not asking it to content question. I'm asking the chair for a ruling as to whether it's appropriately before us. That's all I'm asking for.
I do not believe it's appropriately before. The public weigh in, had they known that this was gonna be voted on. I will pull back my second and, um, then, then I, I mentioned that. Thank you.
Do we have a second question?
Jean's got her hand up.
I just wanted to make a comment and it's probably unnecessary now, since Sarah took a back her second, but, um, I'd, I'd like to say that anything about COVID was simple. Um, unfortunately, that has not been the case. And I'm not so sure that this is that simple. I think it requires a little bit of thought and a little bit of, and a, and a pause to just think it through a little bit more carefully. So I would not, if, if, if the motion carried, uh, I mean, if the motion were acted upon, I would vote no.
Okay, well, I just wanna make one point here, and that is that the CDC, uh, the Center for Disease Control was absolutely unequivocal. And so was, was, uh, Dr. Anthony Fauci, um, that, uh, you know, we could all gather in, in larger groups without the, the necessity, uh, for, for masks. And the governor has echoed those sentiments as well as the commissioner for public health.
That's, that, that is true, but I have to say, I prob, when I'm out in stores, I would say ninety-eight percent of people still have their masks on.
And Jean, I, I will continue.
Jim, I would just stop us, cuz I think the, it's not a question at this point of whether the motion, it, it, it really, we need to, we need to warn this. I think Bruce is right. We need to warn this in order for people to weigh in. And it was gonna be on our July fourteenth, um, agenda, so. You know.
June fourteenth.
June fourteen. Yeah, I just don't like the month of June.
I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna hold another meeting on July fourteen, that'd be all right.
Okay, let's not do July fourteen. Okay, so, all right, so, so we are holding it, yes?
Jeanie?
Yeah. You're breaking up, Jim.
Okay, all right. Did you hear me?
No, we can't really hear you.
Jeanie?
Yes.
Did you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
I'm gonna withdraw on my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Did you hear that?
Yes, you withdrew the motion.
Okay, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
We got it.
We got it, yes. We, the motion is withdrawn, we are, we are ready to close the manager's report, I believe.
The manager's report is done.
Thank you. All right, so Jean.
No, I, I have two questions for the manager.
Okay.
Super quick, super quick. Um, are we all set with the final text for the signage for the, for the Bennington Recreation Center?
I understand that, that that is done.
Okay, good. And am I right in remembering that there's going to be additional fencing on the splash pad on the Pleasant Street side?
Dan can answer that better than me.
Yes, it's on the schedule.
Okay, that's it.
Do we have an opening date for the splash pad for the water?
It's open.
The water's on?
No, the water.
Water's on.
Yeah, but, but it's not, it isn't, it's, it isn't, um, it's not open to the public yet.
I've seen, I've seen families.
We're testing it, yeah, but
Okay.
It's gonna be officially on or about Memorial Day, so.
Perfect, that'll be lovely. Thank you. All right. So quickly, upcoming agenda. Oh, we didn't have much, but now we do. So for June fourteenth, uh, we'll look at the proposal for safety and equity task force again. We have a proposal for recovery housing coming before us. We have the sidewalk discussion subcommittee hopefully coming back to us. Uh, the community, the communication coordinator position and website development will come back to us. And also mask resolution is coming up.
Okay.
That's all we know about today. All right. Other business? Anyone have other business they wanna share? No? All right, well, oh, yes. No, not Jean?
No, I do, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know that I stopped by Youth Appreciation Day on Saturday out at Lyons Park in North Bennington. And I just wanted to show you really briefly these four cards that were created by, um, let's see, it's called the MAUMS Youth Leadership Group. They designed these front and back. It's, it's just great information. So I just wanted to share them. They're amazing. And I saw Dare. And I don't know if you remember, there was, um, an event that they were doing that we had a conflict with and we couldn't attend. I don't remember exactly what it was. It was a video that they created. And she's hoping, it's, it's, it's short. And she's hoping that maybe we could accommodate her, um, and show that short video at a select board meeting sometime in the near future.
Perfect. Okay, I think it was middle schoolers.
Yeah, the, it was this, it was this group, this Middles, MAUMS Youth Leadership Group.
Okay, perfect. Great. Jim, you have a comment?
Yeah, can you?
No. You, you really are breaking up.
Can you hear me well?
That's better.
No.
Maybe not.
I'm coming. How's that? Any bad?
No, you're still.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right, let me try one more. Is that better or not?
That's better.
Which is now?
Yeah, whatever that second one is, yeah.
All right, um, this is, uh, I had, uh, one of our constituents contact me, oh, two or three weeks ago, uh, Renell Muckel, who enjoys with her family. And I, she said that I could use her name. The, uh, the walking path by the, uh, the, the Apple orchard barn and, uh, I, I believe it's called the Green Mountain Conservancy. Is that right, Stu? I got the name right?
I think it was, it was originally One World Conservancy.
One World, okay. And what she noticed, um, with her kids and her grandkids and her dog, um, when they, uh, went walking is that they were covered in ticks. Just covered. And, uh, you know, her, what she had told me is that, you know, the, what she felt was a public health concern. And, uh, Stu and I talked about, um, the possibility of, uh, you know, throwing down some sand and, uh, and peacocks to try to, uh, minimize or mitigate the number of ticks, because ticks won't go on a stone-covered, uh, pathway. They'll, they'll stay in the grass. Um, but I, and I asked you to, uh, talk to RJ about, uh, what the cost might be to, uh, to, uh, get that, that pathway covered and mitigate, uh, the, the amount of tick. So, Stu, do you have a, an estimate on that?
Uh, no, I don't. Uh, I was kinda stopped in my tracks by my, my good, good assistant manager, Mr. Monks, who reminded us that that One World Conservancy is, is designated wetlands. And more than likely, that kind of, uh, improvement to the pathways would not be permitted.
Yeah, well, the only thing we can do is maybe widen the pathways, keep them moch, or we can't put material down in the wetland.
Could we put a sign up that it's, you know, take precautions?
There, ticks are everywhere. You go into woods, you're gonna get ticks.
Yeah, I know, but.
I mean, our, our winters are just not cold enough now to control the population, so they are everywhere.
I have heard that that, that area is, is really, really bad, like much, much worse than many, many locations. I don't know why, but it is.
It's a wetland.
It's a wetland.
Yeah.
That's it.
But it's not like that at the headwaters.
On that note, guys, um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sarah's got her hand up.
Oh, Sarah, you, question, go ahead. No, motion to adjourn? Oh.
Second.
Right, all in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Lovely.
Thank you. This was a quick meeting. Less than three hours.